Okay, good evening everybody. I'd like to call to order the Farmington Board of Education meeting for Monday, March 5th. If you can all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first item on the agenda, Item 5, Consideration Superintendent's Report. In the first instance, can I have, I guess, a motion to move Item B and make that new Item A, so 5B will now become 5A, if I get a motion?
Motion, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions? Okay, so now the new 5A is NGSS Science Instructional Model.
Thank you. Before we begin, I just want to thank the board. This is Board Appreciation Month, so you have a little something on the table for each one of our board members, just on behalf of the school district and our community, thanking you for your service, the countless hours you provide to our school system, and just want to thank all of you. And we'll move on to NGSS. So, well before the new science standards were developed, Farmington has been working on inquiry within our science curriculum. Veronica and Tara Vasquez are here to provide an overview of the exciting work that's been occurring in science aligned to NGSS. I'll have them come on up, then they have a presentation.
Oh, you're gonna, do you want me to run those slides? I'll run the slides, so we'll just, what do you think?
Where would it be? There's a microphone up here now, I think, if she wants to.
Alright, okay, there's one. So, I think it's perfect that it's Board Appreciation Month, because I think that sometimes, you know, some of the issues that reach you are the ones that you have to, like, deal with something that's going on. This is just a celebration of some of the great work that's been happening in Farmington, in science, other places too, but we want to highlight science today, because I think that, you know, some of the things we talk about in terms of innovative work in the district, what's going on, students as actually doing science out there, presenting their work, is really happening, and so we have some, several examples of that, and wanted to share that, sort of as a, you know, a little show of our progress that we've made, but also that it only happens as a result of the support we've given from the board in order to have these kinds of resources, to be able to provide these experiences. I'll say a little bit just about the curriculum writing process, so Tara helps a lot with the curriculum writing process. It starts in the summer, where the units that are going to be developed start, the teachers start writing the units. This past year, we were also able to bring in community experts. So, teachers actually had people from Winding Trails or from Roaring Brook that work in wildlife or in the actual field, come in and help the teachers construct what these units might look like. Then throughout the year, these teams that wrote it, piloted it, so that we work out all the kinks before we scale it up to the rest of the teachers the following year after we revise it. So, these are very, it's kind of a long process, but we think it's worth it, because it's then, you know, high-quality kind of work that the students are getting. So, I'm gonna turn it really over to Tara, and then at the end, I'll just talk a little bit about the new NGSS test that we're gonna have this year, but I'd rather that she give you all the details, and you'll get to see some of the cool things that our students are doing.
Right.
Oh, and I also have, I know some people like to actually write on the PowerPoint presentation, so I have a copy of it for everybody at the table.
So, thank you for having me. We have been focusing for the past few years, I would say, on these goals in science, K-12. We're trying to create purposeful, engaging curriculum, and we're trying to align with the NGSS standards. That means incorporate the practices and the concepts and the big ideas. People say that NGSS could be boiled down to two phrases, which is sense-making and working with evidence. So, that really keeps us focused. We've also been trying to, we're working to incorporate engineering and technology into all of the goals. As a K-12 vertical team, the curriculum work that Veronica was talking about, we're working with teachers on how to shape purposeful units, meaning that they are grounded in a phenomenon, something interesting and real that happens in the world, that has different types of science in it, or a problem that usually ends with an engineering project. We want the units to have some sort of project or action or celebration of learning, to bring it to life, a real audience beyond the classroom, and some community connections, like field trips or experts coming in. And so, that's how we think about a unit, and once we have an idea for a unit, we're thinking about what the actual instruction looks like. So, we have taken all the practices of science and engineering and clustered them into types of tasks, like investigation tasks and engineering tasks, arguing with evidence tasks, and then we've been working as a committee to figure out what that looks like all the way through. So, kindergarten first, all the way through 12th grade, so that we could really build a cohesive program. So, I'll share with you some examples that are, we're working on right now in elementary school, that show how these things are coming to life. Starting in kindergarten, we kick off the year with just understanding what technology is. Already, the kindergarteners come in thinking technology is anything electric, or anything you plug in, or my phone, or a PowerPoint, and we want them to understand that technology is anything that people make. And the teachers start off with tech in a bag, where the kids are pulling things out of a bag, that are either from nature, like a stick, or a rock, or a banana, we don't do GMOs, a banana or fruit, and that's nature, or something that people have made, like a sneaker, or a pencil, or a boot, and that's technology, because people made it. So, we start right off with understanding what technology is, and then we talk about where technology comes from, and that's when people design it, using the engineering process. My word "improve" for some reason got shoved over to the left, but we have, as you probably know, a Farmington process for the engineering design. In kindergarten, it looks like this: think, build, improve. And the kids have lots of opportunities to participate in that process. They build little design sliders, and they have a runway in the classroom, and then they test them and improve them, and go through that process. A lot of their engineering comes right out of stories, because stories always have a problem. So, for example, after reading Billy Goat's Gruff, we define the problem. Can you build a bridge that is strong enough for the biggest billy goat and tall enough to go over the troll? So, right away, they're learning that they have criteria, they're working within constraints, you know, they have time and material constraints, and they build it and test it and redesign it. Another example is the three little pigs. Can you build and test a house that's strong enough that the wolf can blow it down? So, there's our wolf, the blow dryer, and we actually test it and rebuild. Can you design and build a chair that's small enough for a baby bear and strong enough for goalie rods? So, we're going through the engineering design process, trying to, I mean, in kindergarten. We also introduce them to coding in kindergarten. This is the BeeBot, if anyone has seen that, and it's not through a computer, but he's got little buttons on his back, and so, we put a maze together, and then the kindergarteners look at the maze, and they have to think about the series of steps that a robot would go through to get through the maze. And so, they push the buttons on his back, for example, forward, forward, right, forward, left, forward, forward, right, and then they press "go," and the little bee does exactly what he's been programmed to do, and they try to get him through the maze. And of course, it never works right the first time, so then they say, "Oh, we have to fix it, we have to fix it." And if you look in the lower corner here, we have all these little cards. They say, "Well, what did I do the first time?" So, then they can lay out their cards, forward, forward, right, forward, forward, left, and say, "Well, what do I have to change?" So, what they're really doing is putting together a line of code, you know, and designing that out. So, moving into first grade, we really have three types of science units in elementary. We have integrated units, where the sciences weave together with literacy, and we have these phenomenon-based units, where we kick off with something puzzling and engaging that's happening in the real world and unpack it, and we also have these problem-based units. And I will share some examples. This is a first-grade unit that they're doing now, it's on weather, and instead of just being a series of concepts about weather, they kick off with the principal coming in and saying that she always has to make this important decision in first grade, should we have indoor recess or outdoor recess? And she doesn't really know how to make that decision all the time, it's a tricky decision. So, could the first graders please decide what's important and come up with a criteria list or a protocol for her to follow to decide if it's indoor/outdoor recess? So, the class brainstorms, "Well, what matters?" And this is how they get to, "Well, the temperature matters, the precipitation, the ice, the wind," and so they come up with the different conditions of weather that they're going to study. And they go through the engineering design process to create the tools they'll use to collect data about the weather, in order to put together their protocol. You can see here on the lower-left, Union School this year invited in the town workers who prepared, you know, the salt in the town, and they talk all about preparing for weather. So, they've been very engaged in this. This to the right is a tool that a team designed to measure the wind, you know, so they were gonna rate the winds, zero, one. They also, as part of that, go through the engineering design process to build a waterproof house. So, inside their house, there are tissues, and we test it by squirting water on the top to see if the tissues can stay dry. And what I like about this is, in the engineering design process, of course, an engineer would do research. Well, first graders do research through pictures, so they have all different pictures of houses from around the world in places where it rains a lot, and so they take notes, they notice things about houses being on stilts, or about the incline of the roof, or the gutter systems, and then they create their own systems, you know, using straws and all different kinds of materials. This is a unit that second grade is working on now, about pollinators and how important pollinators are in our world, and what I think is so interesting about this unit is the teachers were working with the scientists from Winding Trails and Roger and his team from Sub Edge Farm in Farmington, and putting together a whole trip just for our students. So, people in the community have been very supportive of putting together these experiences. There's several examples in there. This is an example of an integrated unit in second grade on forces, forces in motion for physics. So, in literacy, they're doing lots of reading about different topics with forces, they're putting together their own informational picture books, they do several full investigations about magnets and friction and collisions, and they do two engineering projects. This picture on the bottom, one of the engineering projects is that the students design and build a toy that uses forces, and they design it for the kindergarteners, who have their explorations time and get to go to different centers and play games. So, they present it and teach the kindergarteners how to play it, and then instead of, you know, taking a test or writing an explanation about how they use the engineering design process, they write a letter to the kindergarten teacher, saying how their project, how their team worked to meet the criteria for the toy. This is another example of an integrated unit in third grade, habitats and organisms. This was one of our first Makerspace projects that went with our curriculum, and so, the students study how animals are adapted to survive in different habitats, and then for their project, they work on biomimicry, which is where we get ideas for technology from nature. You know, the idea, if you wanted to stay dry, you would look at how animals stay dry. If you wanted to stay warm, you look at how plants and animals stay warm, because of course, nature solves problems without wasting energy or producing pollution. This was one of my favorite ones. After the kids come up with an idea and they study it, they go to the Makerspace and they build a model of it to communicate. This was designed by a little girl who had a baby brother who was crying, and they wouldn't know what was wrong with the baby, and she was inspired by, I think, a chameleon or a cuttlefish that could change colors, decided she was going to invent a onesie that would have a patch on the chest, and it would change colors to show how he was feeling. So, if his heart was beating, it would show fear, if his stomach was growling, he would show hunger, if he had a temperature, it would show heat. I thought, I would buy that one.
She'll be back at this table soon.
She used the little bits to put together a little light system and show how she would have to change color. This is a third-grade unit that's being written this year, it's about natural resources, and the teachers decided to focus in on water, they wanted to make it very local, so they start off with the phenomenon of where does our drinking water come from? And then, we worked with Stanley Whitman House to design a trip where the students would go to the river and collect samples, they study the water, they talk about why people originally even settled in Farmington and what natural resources we have, and that leads them to the Tonsus Indians and how people use the land. They have an engineering project where they design and test a water filter, and in a few weeks, we're going to the water treatment plant in Bristol to see how water is actually treated, a Farmington one, a vertical structure. This is an example of a phenomenon-based unit in fourth grade. The standards are Earth's changing surface, and so, we've put it in the context of finding a whale fossil at the top of a mountain, and how could that happen? And so, we use this as a way to introduce these ideas and unpack this. They end up studying how fossils are formed, how mountains are formed, how mountains change over time. So, generally, when we introduce the students to a phenomenon, we have them work in groups and design some sort of model, some sort of theory of what they think could have happened. And in that, they end up coming up with lots of questions that frame the unit. So, for this phenomenon, I took a few pictures of student work. This was one theory, that maybe the plates were colliding and the mountain was forming, which caused the tide to drop very rapidly, and then the fish died. That was one theory. There was another theory, maybe it's that whales at one point were adapted to live on land, and they lived on the top of the mountain, which made sense, because students had just finished studying animal adaptations. There was another theory, maybe there was a great heat wave and the water evaporated very quickly. So, you can see that their concept of, you know, time and scale is still developing. But they come up with these ideas, and the whole time they're working on these models, the teachers are asking them questions like, "Well, what do you think was there first, the planet or the ocean? And are all the mountains that we've ever had, have they been here the whole time, or do we ever get new mountains?" And so, they ask the kids these prompting questions and really get the kids engaged in the phenomenon, and then we work backwards from there. So, as they're studying in science, bits and pieces, they're studying how fossils form, how mountains form, erosion, they keep returning to their models and revising them with their new knowledge, until at the end, they put together a new theory. This is an example of a problem-based unit in fourth grade. It's not easy to find a real context for matter, but that's an important set of standards that we need to study. So, we start off with the social worker coming in and saying, "There are a lot of students in class who need fidget toys, and putty is a very popular fidget toy for students to use, and it's expensive." And so, there are a lot of, we'd like to make it, but there are a lot of different recipes out there, and the fourth graders are asked to make these three or four different recipes and determine which one has the best properties. So, in doing that, they study the properties of all the ingredients, and then they test them with stretching tests, they heat them up, they freeze them, they expose them to air, they collect all sorts of data, and at the end, they come up with their evidence-based claim about which the best putty was. This putty over here with glue and liquid starch, if anyone is ever looking for a putty recipe. We heated it up, we froze it, we stretched it, we left it on the counter for a week uncovered. You just couldn't kill this putty. It's a great recipe. Here's an example, in grade five, we have a unit on ecosystems that we've done for years, but this year, we gave it this phenomenon of why do we have so many bears in Farmington? Or I would say now, why does it seem like we have so many bears in Farmington? And how can we coexist with them? We had lots of experts that were willing to come in, which was exciting. We had the police officers, the control, animal control officers come in. Charlene Rogers came in and talked about her 25 years of dealing with calls about bears, and really educated the kids about what to do to not have a backyard that attracts bears, and what to do if you run into bears in the woods. This is Kat, and another person came in from the DEEP and taught the students how scientists track bears, how they lure them into a truck with jelly doughnuts and all the tracking system of every... A lot of the kids thought that if bears have a tag on their ear, it means that they're troubled, and that's not true at all. And they taught us the system, what the colors mean, what the numbers mean, how they pull out a tooth and count the rings. It was really fascinating how they studied bears. And that's Jay Kaplan from Roaring Brook, and he taught us about 200 years of history of Connecticut, how we went from being so much forest to farms, when our population in bears really went down, back to 40% forest again, and talked about how the bear population is roaring at a rate of 10% per year here. It's very interesting. We also went to Winding Trails for a full-day program, and I wanted to talk about Mark Dale and Judy Witzky. They, we've been working with them for a few years, and so they've put together a series of programs for us that all build on each other, so we go in first grade, third grade, and fifth grade for full-day trips that they, we've worked together, so it aligns with our units, and they all build on each other. It's a wonderful program there. And then we put on a bear aware fair, got the idea from the libraries that often have the police come in to educate the community. So, we invited in parents, families, the police department, and we had bear aware fairs. Started off in our teams, where it was a whole group presentation, and then the communities went into the classroom, where the students were in charge of stations, and they educated people about how to coexist with bears. Moving into a grade six example, in grade six, we study weather and climate, and at the same time, in social studies, we're studying Latin America. And so, this year, we're taking our weather concepts and we're putting them into phenomenon that are all based in Latin America and linking it all together. So, right now, we're studying what caused Hurricane Maria and all the science that went into that. It's kind of a dark picture, but that is, little girl named Alanis in sixth grade, who just moved here from Puerto Rico and was there for the hurricane, and was there for a month after, and she was able to tell her story, and we're really trying to pull together science and social studies in sixth grade, to have these more meaningful units. And my last share, something that we worked on last year, was this idea of introducing students to coding and getting them excited about coding before they head off to middle and high school. We had a five-day sort of mini-course for all sixth graders, where we introduced them to, started off with just graph paper coding, very simply, we moved on to our keyboard robots, where they put together lines of code and use a scanner with these little robots, and then we get them all started on a 20-hour self-guided accelerated coding course on coding.org, and we get them really going on that and invite them to continue it on their own. It's like a block and drag, you know, drag and block coding, but it has all the basics. It's really a wonderful program. So, we're hoping to get kids excited and interested in that before they go off to middle school or high school. I think that is my last.
Yeah.
I'll just say a couple of other, just to summarize, and to give you a little view of the NGSS test that's coming up, so you can see, like I said, this is the good stuff, right? You get to hear about all the really exciting things that our kids are experiencing, and I would say that, you know, you can't just buy these units, you can see how they're so connected to our community and connected just to relevant things, they're so up-to-date. I mean, Hurricane Maria, and it's already in our curriculum, so it's really exciting that we can do that kind of work, and I just, you know, I'm so proud of that whole connection to the local community, not only that we're using the resources in our own, you know, in our own backyard here, but also that we use our own students as resources. So, they'll create things, and they'll develop things, and then they, you know, do a bear aware fair for the community, or they go into our elementary, into our kindergartens, and they make things for our kindergartners. So, just using our resources that way has been really exciting work. And I also think another side benefit is when the teachers are writing them, it's just more interesting and engaging for them. They haven't been handed a canned curriculum, they get to develop it and feel some pride over writing these very exciting things that kids and families really love. So, you can see why we're, you know, we really, in the state, do very well on the, I mean, we don't have an NGSS test yet, but we've done well on the, on the science test, and but we do have, there is a change in the test, but we think we're poised for that kind of work, too, and I provided some sample questions at the, in the appendix D of that report, so you can kind of see what's changing. A lot of the test questions now actually allow students to experiment on the screen, so they have to, like, change variables right on the screen, and then make some, collect data, make some conclusions right on there. So, you can see how all this kind of work is really preparing our students for that kind of thinking, even on the test. So, I provided you with a lower level and then an upper level kind of question. What will happen is, it's a computer-based test now, it was last year, but it wasn't NGSS-aligned the way that it will be this year, but there's also a change, so the change will be that instead of 10th graders taking it, 11th graders are gonna take it, which means that our 10th graders that were tested last year and got a score, now are gonna be participating in a field test. So, you might hear about that, but you should just know that that is true, there's no way, there's, you know, that's just the way it is in the state set, and it's considered a field test, which means that neither the district nor the students are, will get results from that. So, it's really just to test the questions, so that they know which ones, you know, which ones, you know, work at those grade levels. But again, there, like I said, there, the test now has this sort of construct-centered design, summit of assessments, then would look like our kind of assessments, and there are, and there's sort of these innovative items on their testing. So, like I said, this was meant to give a quick synopsis of what we're, what we're working on, and if you look at the first page of the report that you've got in your booklet, over, you know, the board report there, we provided like a little chart of what traditional science looks like, and I think you would agree that anything you've heard tonight is really aligning to this new vision for science education. Tara was here, because she could present a lot of what we're doing at the elementary school, but she's helped us with trainings at other levels, too, and so, all, all science is moving in this direction across the district. We're very well-aligned, we have a vertical team that works on it and that communicates frequently, so that everyone knows what the other one's doing, and there's a, there's a clear progression of skills and concepts and ideas, which also, if you wanted to, in appendix A, it's kind of lined up, lined up for you, you can kind of see what the different standards are that students would learn across time, and, but each one of those also has what it looks like in the lower level, what it looks like in the middle level, and what it looks like at the high school level.
All right. Excuse me, thank you Veronica, thank you Tara. You know, you go through that, it's fascinating to watch, I mean, I think it's just a wonderful program, and it sort of, given the achievements, you guys are, you know, the great things you're achieving, it makes me realize why I went to law school, I guess, with the kids are running circles around me scientifically at the elementary school, but, you know...
Yeah, we should've made them do it.
Yeah, you should've, it would've been very impressive. But you, gee, I got the impression that it seems like it's more hands-on, and we're maybe not relying on technology as part of this, I mean, it almost seems like it's a more hands-on learning experience, is that part of the goal, or?
Yes, I think to be more engaging at that level. As far as, do you mean technology in...
I know, you're incorporating, but it seems, you know, we've become so dependent on just sitting at a computer, it sounds like the kids are working through the things in their hands-on, in their heads, I mean, I know, we incorporate technology, but it seems just more real, like live, you know?
Yeah, I think it engages the students, especially in elementary, that level, to have real, you know, investigations and engineering projects, to go places.
Right, but when they collect the data and stuff, they would use the technology, and then also, when they're presenting, there's a lot of presenting with PowerPoint or creating something that then would be a presentation kind of skill, that uses the computers.
Any questions, Liz?
Or collecting, even collecting.
Or collecting, even collecting. I mean, students could even collect with their, you know, at the older levels, they're collecting, we, you know, I know a lot of schools say, oh, they shouldn't have their cell phones, but sometimes we use it as a great collection device, and we tell them to take it out and take a picture and do this. So in some ways, we use it a lot for being able to do some collection of data on the run.
I was going to say, last week in sixth grade, the students had been, they were studying seasons. They had been given the question, how could it be summer in Uruguay and winter in Connecticut at the same time? And so their task was to put together a model, but we said you didn't have to draw it on paper and pencil. You could use your Chromebook to do whatever you'd like for a model. And so some of the kids used the Chromebook to take pictures, then they uploaded the pictures to a video and did a voiceover. Others did a little video, and then they uploaded the video to like recap this place where you can share your videos with the class. And they came up with all these different ways to, to do their models. It was interesting.
Fascinating. Liz?
So I think it's great, especially the younger you go, it's, you're incorporating like the play-based learning and the reading. It's all, you're tricking them into thinking that they're reading Goldilocks, but they actually have to figure out complex problems. So, but I, I mean, I think that's great. And my, I guess my question is, since we're trying to have, you know, you know, students that are leaders of their own learning and they're making choices, in even like in first grade or in kindergarten, do they get to choose? Like, do, do the kids get to choose what book wanted, had the problem that they wanted to try to solve, or is that not?
I think there's a balance, and they make it work. For example, when you're putting together an engineering task, you have all the materials there, and I think they're just building understanding in kindergarten. But they also, in kindergarten, you know how they have their explorations and they have the centers? One of the centers is always like the maker center, and it has all different materials. And so throughout the year, they have different opportunities to build and make other things.
So everyone in the class would do the same, like Goldilocks thing, or the same, you know, Billy Goat Scruff?
For that challenge.
Right. Okay.
But for example, like, in second grade, when they're, they're creating a toy for kindergarten, I guess everybody's creating a toy, but they created all different things. There were bowling toys and magnet toys and all, all different things.
And the high school example that I gave here, which was an anatomy course, they study the muscular system, and they get to pick whatever athlete they want to pick in order to analyze. So there are a lot of choices built in, in general, in most of the, in most of the units.
Questions or comments? All right. Tara, thank you very much. It's fascinating. It really is.
Veronica, how long ago did we do the science review?
Yeah.
That was even before I was in, so, yeah.
Seven years ago.
Five, seven years ago, yeah.
Well, before NGSS, we were planning.
Actually, right, it was when, like, they were kind of like talking about NGSS coming. So then there were a lot of like, ooh, let's not, let's see where NGSS goes before we make that shift and things like that. So, yeah, it was before NGSS. But in anticipation, because we knew something was coming at that time.
I just want to thank Tara personally. She's just an incredible leader and the support the board has given us to have leaders like Tara who can focus all of their time and attention on building an incredibly rich and engaging curriculum alongside teachers and, and think broadly about the alignment grade to grade. We can have groups of teachers working on interesting units, but it takes someone with the bigger vision to make sure that we're building the skills over time. And, you know, Tara and Veronica work closely together on that, and I just want to thank you so much for giving us these really clear examples of how it's working with children. They're so engaged, it's so exciting, and I know you have the big picture in mind as well, so.
And Tara, when I arrived, Tara was the teacher of the year.
Yep.
And I think it's just a fact, you know, it's a great example to have Tara here, you know, someone who was a leader as a classroom teacher, and this board supported Tara moving on to a position where she's a leader of teachers and is able to lead us in this particular area. I have seen such a difference in classrooms when I go into class. I was saying, when Tara came in, I said, you know, it's, students are just so excited and they, that irresistible task, you know, they want to get to it, they're so excited about it. And these are just fabulous examples of not only students engaging in real-world problems, but also you've brought partnership with our community into our classrooms, all, all these experts coming into our classrooms and providing their expertise. It just, it's just so exciting. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, so the new item 5B, the Connecticut State Department of Education Accountability Report.
This will not be as exciting as the first presentation.
But still goes, still goes along with Board of Education Appreciation. It's like, it's all good news again.
Right. So we, we do, in Connecticut, have an accountability system. It has changed over time to be more comprehensive in design so that we're not just looking at one test at one moment in time. And this aligns then to the federal accountability system because we have to submit as a state what we're going to measure, and it has to be approved. So this has been approved at the federal level, and so Veronica is going to provide an overview.
So you have the report in front of you, and it really has a lot of what I'm just going to talk about briefly, but as Kathy said, we now have a much, instead of just the test score, you know, we have all these indicators. And really, appendix A shows you what all of those are. So there are 12 different indicators. They all have different points associated with them, and every school district can earn a certain number of points depending on whether we hit that target score or not. If you don't hit the target score, let's say you get, you know, 67, but the target score was a 65, 75, you get the percentage of points, the points that are like the 60, let's say 67 divided by 75, that's the number that you get there out of 100 or out of 50, like, or out of 50, whatever the point value there is. You get a certain percentage based on the number of points you actually got there. In terms of, there are certain things that will knock you down. So they use these to come up with a score up to 100%, like 100%. Like, the most you can get any school district or any school can get is 100 points because it always gets converted back to a percentage. Then they lay out all the schools, depending on the num, whatever number that everyone got, the top 25% go into this category one, then the next 50% go into category two, and then the next 25% go into category three. But not 25% of all schools end up in category one because you can get knocked down a whole level for certain things. So, for example, some of our, our schools, for example, so on the page that looks like this, which I wish this, right now, I wish this had page numbers. I really didn't think about that. But it would be page three. It shows you where our, our schools are. So all of our Farmington Elementary Schools are in the category one. Irving Robbins is in category two. They were actually in that 50% band. But Farmington High School, for example, was actually in one, in category one, but got knocked down because one of the critical things you have to have is you can't have a large enough achievement gap that is outside of what they would consider a standard deviation. And so you would see on their sheet that they do have an outlier group. So the size of the gap in ELA, for example, for the high school, our gap is 18.5, but the, it could have only been a 16.6. So we were over the allowable achievement gap. Therefore, Farmington High School, if any one of the three tests it shows that, you're automatically knocked down a level. So, but really, I mean, again, it's, it's good news because you can see that, that happened to most districts that we compare ourselves to. So we're certainly not alone there. And our score, and you'll see, I put that in here, we actually ended up at our high school that, Farmington High School earned 88% of the possible points available, which actually ranked us ninth in the state for the number of, we actually ranked ninth in the state for the number of points earned by any high school in the whole state. So again, which, depending on what numbers you look at, it just, it put us really out there and at the top of the state. In terms of high schools, it's just that we couldn't be in that top category because we have too large of a gap, which, by the way, we're all aware of because every time I come to present about smarter balanced, or about SATs, or about anything like that, we always discuss that gap that's there. So that, it was not news to anybody, like, nothing in this report was, was news to us in terms of that. I think that a really helpful chart then is this one on the Warner says Farmington District Results for the 2016-17 school year. I would say that the big idea of what the state was trying to achieve with this marking system were three things, like a well-rounded education, like, let's not just count testing. And so here, it shows that our district earned 84% of the total possible points. Only seven districts earned a greater percentage of points than Farmington, and three of them also earned the same 84%. So, and then the highest score received by any district was 89%. So we're really doing well as a district. And then I'd already told you about the one about where high school ranks there. Another big idea of this was equity. That's why a lot of points are associated with equity, plus that you can move down an entire category by having that outlier gap. So, so there's two sort of equity factors built right in because they want schools, and particularly schools like ours, to keep pushing ourselves to do better in terms of all of that. And so, so the good, the silver lining in there is that we, our students that are in those high-needs categories are performing well in terms of compared to the state. So even though we still have the gap in some instances, our high-need students were the 22nd top performers in math in the state, 20th, I mean, in ELA, 20th in math. And in science, they were actually, our, our high-need students were actually second in the state. So it depends on how you compare the data, but I would say that, I wanted to provide that to say that there's good news even on the equity front, even though that still is something that we struggle with. And then the last point that the state really wanted to emphasize, which our system in the past did not do, was student growth. So this is really cool that our, at least three through eight, all of the scores are on a vertical scale score of like thousands of points, like, it goes all the way up to 2,000 something points. So we actually know if in third grade, they get this number of points, and in fourth grade, they get this number of points, we knew that, we know that they have grown. And so the state is factoring that in. And again, we rank high in the state in K through 12 districts in terms of student growth. And like I said here, two of our elementary schools were standouts in this measure. Noah and Union were ranked fourth and fifth of all 755 schools in terms of student growth, which is absolutely incredible and amazing. So there's a lot of really good news in this report. And you can see in the appendix, I also gave you the DURG analysis. We're still in DURG B, so appendix, this actually is labeled. Appendix C shows you our DURG B comparison there. And you can see that we're high up in our DURG in terms of the percentage of points that Farmington earned. And like I said, we were tied for the 84% with a couple of other districts, and then really seventh in the entire state. So only several schools were, districts were higher than that. So again, I think a lot of, go along with Board Appreciation Week and that, sort of the good news, it's really, I think, all around, good news, nothing unexpected, and actually, you know, doing really, doing really well with this. And it means that we're doing the things that they were hoping that we would do, which is, you know, focusing on the whole child, making strides in equity, and then really paying attention to our students' growth over time. And so all the, you know, those are, those are really strong factors. So I thought I'd just open it up now to questions after giving you sort of a summary of what the report says. You also have the charts for each one of our individual schools, and you should know that if you went on, I'm looking like as if the mouse is here that I could show you, but if you go on the website, Ed site, you can actually download, if you were ever interested, I don't know if you ever have this kind of time to devote to this, but you could actually download the entire PowerPoint that has the results for every school and district in the entire state. You just can download the entire Excel file, and you start poking around in there and looking at anybody's scores. It's all, this is all public information, including the comparisons. They don't break them down like this, but you can certainly find them in that report.
Thank you, Veronica. I know it's Board Appreciation Week, but we appreciate everything. You know, you, we look good because of you guys, so this is, cuts both ways, okay? It's a two-way street here. So it's, it's administrative, administrators, appreciation week, teachers appreciation, everything a week. I mean, because we all do this together. I mean, it's, it's a cumulative, you know, collaborative effort here, so I appreciate that. Any questions? Yes, Liz?
Hi, Veronica. Thank you. So I, you said that, so all four elementary schools are in the top, and then IAR and Farmington High School, did they both get knocked down because of the achievement gap? No, okay, just the high school. Now, as far, as far as getting the achievement gap, is our achievement gap, what is it doing? Is it getting bigger, getting smaller, staying the same?
It's about the same. And we usually are, so if you mean at the high, so some schools, yeah, so some schools don't have that kind of a gap, obviously, because it didn't, we didn't fall in that category. But the high school, that is similar, that is similar to what it was last year. And we actually were outliers in both ELA, math, right, well, actually, yeah, so all three of them. So, yeah.
So are there any, and I know that this is something that we've talked about before, and it's, you know, obviously, everyone's thinking about it. Are there any districts that you're aware of that have been successful in eradicating their achievement gap? And do you know what they do to do that? Like, are there things that are different?
Well, see, gaps are so difficult. Because, the, the reason it's so difficult is because there are places that don't have a gap, but their non-high-achieving kids are not scoring very well, and that's what makes the gap smaller. So in places like us, that's why there are only 11 high schools that even, because, right, 25% of all high schools theoretically should be on that list, and there's only 11 there. So that tells you that it's really not that easy to do. And what I found was that some of the schools that ended up on that 11 actually don't have a large enough high-needs population to even qualify to put that, to count those scores. So they don't even get, like, a high school is supposed to be able to get either 12,500 points or 13,500 points. Many of those schools, I think, three or four of the schools that are above us, don't even qualify for getting those points. So they're only out of like 850 points because they don't even have enough of a high-needs population to count. So that's why it's so tricky to say really an answer to that, because like, one way to eradicate the gap is for nobody to do well.
Right. That's not the way I would do it.
That's not the solution.
You know, so that's one way. And so you would see in some districts, that's, their, their scores are just not overall as high as ours. So that's, so that's a tricky one to really, to, to find a place that's like us, that's doing phenomenally well with the high-needs group? No, that's, there's no, there's no place that I would say right now I'm turning to to look at. And I believe I looked, because I want that.
I know you did.
That's why it's so good to have this, because you want to find places like, what are you doing? Or if we found something like that with attendance or something like that, like, what are you doing? And we've had those, like, there were, like, last year, we looked at some of that stuff. And then our department leader in, in, for example, in the school counseling department, she went to her next meeting and said, we noticed that your school is doing so well on attendance, tell us what you're doing, and things like that. So it certainly does prompt some of those kinds of conversations, and so we do look for those opportunities for sure. But this one, I, I really did try to look, and I just can't find a, a place to help us with that.
Okay. Thank you.
I had a lot of the same concerns that Liz has raised, but I mean, I guess, summarizing it, but we haven't ever seen any, this, this gap stays within sort of the parameters of the same. And we're no, we're not seeing any major fluctuations or it's, understanding the issues you raise, the population and the high achievers or whatever, but, so we're not seeing any measurable issues we have to address from that gap. We're always trying to address it, obviously, but.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, right. Nothing that this answers for us.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, okay.
To that.
Yeah.
And could you just talk a little bit Veronica about the growth? Because I think that, that would be a place to look to ensure that our students are showing exceptional growth and we hope that it's all students showing that growth.
Yeah, and that is what's cool too in these reports because you can also see not only the growth target achieved by all students, but then the average growth target by high need students. So, they do split it out even for us on that and we do well on that, on those measures we do well, that we're moving our high need students more than other places.
Right. So, that goes to your question and even though we, we have such high performers here, it's, you know, we're also just trying to get everyone moving, you know, to that high level, you know, high level of achievement. Our high needs population is moving at a faster pace.
Yeah, and that's what makes it a better measure in the past, which is what the state was trying to achieve because they want to give you credit for having moved those students. Whereas in the past, it was sort of an absolute score, um, which the, that student was gonna, in many cases, would stay maybe in that category for a long time, but now you have more fine grains, uh, on a scale score, so you can actually, um, give them the credit and give school districts the credit for actually moving the students, which is awesome.
Is it, and is it more appropriate measures? Because I remember year after year, No Child Left Behind, we would have schools falling behind, not because of the whole, but of cohorts. And cohorts where our hands were tied, um, testing, um, being given the same test. So, uh, the measures that we were actually being evaluated or a school that fell below, these students really weren't being assessed, I would say, in a fair manner. So, is that, that seems like it's been a, a good change and plus.
The tests themselves, that the, that the tests themselves are different?
The appropriateness of the, of the evaluating.
So, two things happened with the test. I mean, one is that, like I said, it's on this scale score, so you're, you're able to measure progress over time, but also the test is adaptive. So, right, so.
And it wasn't before.
And it wasn't before. So, now it's able to, um, sort of figure out a student's level, so students can go, um, not a hundred percent as far as they want to go. I don't think that all the points are available to them. Like if you're in third grade, you can't get all eight, you know, eighth grade content would never sort of appear for you, I don't think. But certainly up to a very high range for, for third graders that they could see and score on. Um, but again, and then, and then for some of those students, sometimes they, they actually are the ones that aren't growing as much because the next year, maybe they didn't make that huge, because now they have to make a big percentage of a, of a, of a growth, um, leap in order, uh, to get the, the growth score too. So, they might make it on the overall, but some of those students actually aren't making on the growth, whereas some other students are making it on the growth, but still not on the overall. Um, but because it's adaptive, yeah, you're not comparing, like how did third graders do last year versus this year? It doesn't really matter anymore because you can look at, how did our fourth graders do now compared to when they were in the third grade, which we never had the opportunity to do before.
Ms. Eno?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions?
Well, I just wanted to ask, with the high needs group, there, it's, um, three different, um, groups of kids, right? It's English as a Second Language and then the special ed kids and I don't, I forget what the.
Yeah, they call it a super group because, yeah, because sometimes they're in a grade level. When you have a hundred students in a grade level like some districts do, there wouldn't be enough students to parse it out for all of these. So, they said, put it all together. So, it was the economically disadvantaged, um, and like you said, English learners and then students with disabilities. Um, and that's another thing, like economically disadvantaged.
That's what I wanted to ask, is do you see differences if you break it down, like differences in.
It's hard to tell and so, I would say a lot of students are also sometimes duly identified too. So, it might be your.
Because I would think that would be different from, you know, every school is a little bit different, every district is a little bit different if you broke it down that way, but they have this one big super group.
They put them all together, but also in, you know, and, and it might be also, even though there's a standard for what the economically disadvantaged means, because it depends on whether you qualify for lunch, but I think that there's a lot of places where different families sign up or don't sign up, depending on, so I would think that, I would say that in Farmington, probably there are more students that would probably, I don't have this for a fact, might qualify for economically disadvantaged, but given, you know, maybe are not signing up or whatever. So, that would be, you know, another factor in all of this, but in other places they might. So, I mean, that's, you know, that's just from sort of, um, you know, that's not from any evidence, but more like from talk in the district that we, we know that there's, that's probably happening a little bit.
I just, um, I did want to say, it's, it really is, as you said, a celebration of, you know, our faculty and our administrators, our students and parents. Um, you know, there, it's a completely different test than we used to utilize, yet our students still are performing, you know, really at an impressive level. And even given this new accountability system, I think many, many years ago, Farmington put the whole child as a priority and to see that the state now puts the whole child as a priority, it just speaks to our forward-thinking approach, always be, leading the way. And, um, you know, I'm just, you know, really pleased with the results, but it also gives us an opportunity to look at not only our strengths, but those areas that we do need to improve. Um, and, and you know, so we take this and we think right away, you know, what are the areas that we need to work on? And, um, that's what you, you would see, um, in our development, our, our school and program development plans. This is not the only data we look at, we look at other data, but it certainly does inform, you know, our improvement efforts.
Okay, thank you Veronica.
Thanks.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, next item on the agenda, five C, engaged learning update.
So, you have, um, many different items here. I'm going to highlight just a few because IAR, uh, our students at IAR just did, they just won the Connecticut Middle School Science Bowl and they'll be going to Washington DC to compete at the national level. Uh, there's also another art item in there about APE at, uh, IAR. And IAR did receive a grant from ExxonMobil. Um, they were nominated by Deb and Scott Soucy from the Town Line Mobile in Farmington. They do this every year for us and we just really appreciate, uh, that they apply for this grant and then it usually goes to either IAR or Farmington High School and some years we get a grant for both. Uh, East Farms is highlighting student leadership and the student council's focus on kindness. FHS has three national merit scholarship finalists. Uh, West District, uh, highlighted a recent assembly led by students and Westwoods included an exciting geography B press release. One of our students will be competing in Washington DC in May. So, lots of great news from our engaged learning update.
Any questions? Okay, thank you Kathy. Uh, next item, five D, professional appointments, retirements, resignations, we have a few, but.
Yeah, so this is really a bittersweet time for the Farmington schools. Um, we're very happy for our beloved faculty members who will be entering a new chapter in their life, retirement. Um, but at the same time, it's really difficult, uh, because, uh, we're going to dearly miss these outstanding contributors and expert educators. Um, so I just, uh, asked the board to, uh, join me in really celebrating these educators, many of whom you know their name because they've either come before the board or we've highlighted them as teachers of the year. Um, and they really leave a legacy here of excellence and, um, deep care for all of our students. So, we've learned a great deal from them and we just really want to celebrate each one of our retirees and of course, try to convince them to come back. Yes, we've already started those. Continue to be connected.
No, but I think it, when you look at the list, you know, it's twenty, thirty-one, thirty-five, twelve, twenty, twenty-six, fourteen, twenty-six and twenty-four years. I mean, it's, it just reflects the commitment to the community and the district and, uh, everybody's working, we can't thank the teachers enough.
Yeah.
Yeah, just. Okay, uh, item six, unfinished business, budget impact, budget update.
Uh, just before you say something, I just also want you to know that, um, there was a recommendation by a board member, just to, uh, make sure that we integrate facility issues in this part of the agenda, so we will do that as we go forward if there are any facility issues, because we do want to keep an eye on not only FHS, but all of our schools. So, Vince will do updates when we go through this agenda item, when it comes to facilities.
Thank you Kathy. Um, on, um, budget, uh, budget update, uh, the first payment of, uh, the excess cost grant, um, has come to the, uh, town of Farmington, to the board. Um, so the payment usually comes in a couple of different times. This is, um, the time of the year when we should be receiving it. Four hundred and fifty-one thousand, six forty-four was received last week. Um, and, uh, the second payment usually comes in May. Um, so that's on track as I am expecting, um, that it should be, uh, we should be receiving. Um, the, uh, as, as Kathy mentioned, um, the most, um, significant or, um, material item for facilities is, as the board's aware, um, the roof repairs here at Farmington High School that were done over the course of, really over the course of three weeks, the past three weeks. Um, the, um, there were, uh, a team of roofers who did patches in a whole bunch of different areas on, um, Farmington High School's, um, roof where we were experiencing leaks. Um, and most importantly, um, uh, Tim Harris, our director of facilities, who had done a similar project, suggested a similar project, um, uh, two years ago, um, on a different section of the, of the Farmington High School roof. He suggested that same fix, um, to, um, hatch near, hatch this area that we were experiencing leaks with doing roof drains, installing roof drains. So, the roof drains were installed. Uh, we received very good news after the rain from this past, um, Friday, um, that the, uh, roof drains were successful in eliminating the ponding on, um, the roof. And, um, we are not experiencing any, um, new leaks and we're definitely, the, the custodians at the high school are confident enough to, um, reinstall many of the, um, because now it's dried out pretty well, reinstall many of the, um, ceiling tiles into the areas where they were experiencing leaks. Um, so, uh, the credit really goes, the, uh, roof company is a terrific roof company that we've used, um, for many years. So, very reputable, um, firm here in Connecticut that works with a lot of school systems. Um, but, uh, to Tim Harris and his, um, crew, they did a great job, um, during this difficult period up here at the high school. Um, so, uh, um, that is, that is an unexpected, um, um, expense to, um, the board. Um, it is now, that repair in itself, um, is now in excess of forty thousand dollars, um, for this unexpected, um, uh, critical repair that we just did. Uh, so, um.
Could I just say too, um, just this weekend, Vic was here, uh, with his team and they were, they worked so hard to get ceiling tiles back up because things were looking better, so they felt like, you know, we want to get them up and we actually ran out of them. So, there are some classrooms that still don't have ceiling tiles because we just simply ran out and we need to, uh, purchase some more. But I think, you know, um, not only should we commend Tim and Vic and their team, the, the roofing company, but also, uh, our faculty and staff here and administrators. This was very disruptive for them, it was very difficult few weeks and, you know, we just really thank everyone and the students as well, uh, for their patience during this time. If this was unexpected and, um, you know, we right away luckily had a solution that worked in a different part of the building a couple of years ago, so we applied that same solution, uh, to this, uh, area, which was much larger. It, you know, over twelve different areas of the high school were impa, was, were impacted by this. So, I just want to thank everyone, uh, this was, you know, really difficult time.
No, I was just gonna say the same thing, just echo the comments of Kathy, that we know this is a very difficult trying time and the, the ability for Tim and the crew to get this done and the, uh, teachers and the students. Now, but Vince, are, where are we in the, we're forty thousand, we're pretty much done with the repairs now? I mean, it, Tim.
There's still, there's still some assessment going on.
Yeah.
Right.
Um, there's still some patching, um, that is probably going to take place. Um, and, uh, Tim is, Tim, um, you know, is very focused on, on this right now. Um, and as Kathy mentioned, this is a very large roof area and this is not the only roof area that was built in nineteen ninety-two. Um, there are other roof areas, thankfully, that we're not experiencing leaks on, but it is the same age, um, roof of high school. Um, so the potential is there though.
Yeah, so I think we all are, um, we're happy, but we're cautiously happy about this because we, you know, we're not sure if, um, after the weather event that is forecasted for this week, if we would have some issues. So, we're just, you know, we're going to continue to monitor it, but, uh, Tim Harris has been very busy, um, because it's not only, um, FHS, there are other areas in, in the school system that, you know, where we continue to have challenges, so, you know, it's very busy.
Yep. Liz?
Um, so, I just wanted to ask, um, I mean, it was very, we had a tour of the area. The Board of Education went on a tour, which was, um, eye-opening. Um, I know Christie, you didn't, you weren't able to go. I know Michelle Hamilton and I know, um, Mark Blor did not attend the tour, so, um, not every board member has done that and now it looks like the opportunity may have passed since things are being repaired. But I did want to, some things I learned, and I just want to make sure I have this correct, is that, like you said, the fix that we have now, that was the forty thousand dollars, is temporary, uh, it's not meant to be a permanent fix.
Correct.
So, people shouldn't be thinking, "Oh, everything's fine at the high school now, they fixed the leak, let's go." So, all right. And, uh, Tim Harris has done a wonderful job. I mean, it's unbelievable to me what he's done, um, but the, um, roof that is up for replacement for two hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars in the capital budget, people should also be aware, is not necessarily the part of the roof that was leaking this most recent time. Is that right?
Also correct. That's the area that we did this kind of repair to get it a little bit more life.
Right.
And, uh, but it's not this section of roof.
And if we, and I think I remember this from the meet, the, the tour that we had, if we were to want to replace all of the nineteen ninety-two sections, it would be many, it would be more than two million doll, it would be around two million dollars?
Oh, it would be more.
Three, three million dollars?
It would, I, I do not know an exact amount of money. It would be a significant amount of money.
Okay, and this, I mean, I know it was unexpected as to the timing, but, um, I mean, do you think, it's unexpected, but not really surprising because one of the things I learned on the tour was that the roof is at the end of its life. Not, it's about a twenty-five-year life expectancy for a nine, for a.
Twenty-five to thirty-year.
Yeah. So, um, that being said, uh, the reason that it wasn't done in the last few years be, was because of the high school project, right? We were, we were, you're not going to put a new roof on a building that you think you might get a new building.
Well, that and the assessment report in twenty sixteen, the, the area of the roof that is, uh, leaking right now was in fair condition at the time and we have other roofs that are not designated in that area. So, we, you know, we prioritize the roofs and we have a plan. Um, so that, that's part of it. I will say that we do know in the areas that had roof leaks, we did get a quote for that. It doesn't mean it's the entire nineteen ninety-two roof area, but the area that we just recently experienced, it would be about eight hundred and eighty thousand.
Correct.
Uh, we shared that with town council.
Right.
If we were to address, you know, the areas that are, were leaking in the last four weeks.
That is not the entire nineteen.
But that is not the entire nineteen ninety-two roof area.
I believe, I, and I might be wrong, but I believe it was like three million dollars for the whole ninety-two area, give or take. Um, but, so that's a, that's a good point. Thank you for saying that because the, the roof that's being replaced or want, you know, if this capital budget gets approved for two hundred and sixty-nine thousand is the one that wa, is the area where it was repaired last year, correct? Because that was in the worst condition in the report?
Correct. That area was rated poor.
Right. Okay. Um, and, so, one of the things that we were told about the roof is that, um, the rain itself isn't always the problem, it's when there's heavier things on top. So, this snowstorm that may be coming, although I'm in denial that it's coming, we might see some more problems crop up, but we're not sure.
You know, I'm not.
Not in the ones they replay, they fixed, but in other areas.
I think the, um, biggest concern is, um, freezing.
Right, okay.
Not so, not even so much weight.
You're right, it was the freeze thaw thing.
Yeah, water or weight or snow, it's, it is about freeze, the, um, freezing, water getting into small areas, freezing and then expanding a little bit and then water finding, um.
Okay.
A channel end. That's the biggest concern.
Right.
Yep.
And then just one more thing, I did, and this is just general, Tim's not here, so I, people, uh, students, faculty, administrators, everybody's been great. If a ceiling tile is replaced and it has a stain on it, that doesn't necessarily mean that it's still leaking, right? People don't need to panic.
Correct.
If they see a discoloration or a stain. If they see a discoloration or a stain, it's been deemed to be okay to put back in. That ceiling tile is not leaking anymore.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Liz. Any other questions?
I only have one other thing, just to mention, next Tuesday is the next part of, not on capital specifically, it's on the operating budget request. It would be when Kathy does her presentation, and there's other presentations, but the presentation evening. And then on Wednesday, at 4 o'clock, is the budget here, the budget town council, it's hearing, is that the first?
It's the, yeah, presentation from the board. So we will be there presenting our, our budget book, and answering any questions that the town council may have.
Good.
So it's next Monday and Wednesday?
Next Tuesday and Wednesday.
Is Tuesday at 4 o'clock?
No.
No?
Tuesday's usually at 7:00. And that is just simply Kathy getting up, presenting, you know, her PowerPoint, I present my PowerPoint, and then the next, 7:00, 7 o'clock. And then the next day, it's at 4:00.
4:00. I knew one of, so Wednesday.
Yeah, Wednesday's at 4:00.
All right.
Okay. All set, Vince? All right, thank you. No additional questions, Vince? Okay, thank you. Item seven, new business. Okay. Item eight, consideration of the Business Administrators' Report. Can I have a motion to approve the financial report dated January 2018?
Motion, second.
Okay, Vince?
I would, I bring the board's attention to, I think this, there's nothing new about the ones I'm going to bring the board's attention to. It's the same ones, but they still continue to trend not as great as I'd like to see. Nurses' salaries, specifically, special education nurses, services salaries. Consultation services, there's, there's going to be a, a need to do some extra CCSN, get some extra assistance from, like, one of our contractors, and that will fall into consultation services. So that is an item that's going to still experience some pressure. Pupil transportation, as I had mentioned now a couple of times, after Liz had spotted it, it's special education transportation services. It has to do with our outplacement, tuition, outplacement students, and some of the costs there. And also not as many shared transportation opportunities for the board right now. So those are the areas that are having some issues. Other than that, though, in, in general, the board's budget still isn't very good, trending very, very good overall. When you look at it overall, it's still trending very good. Our self-insurance situation is very good compared to other years.
Okay. Any questions, comments, Vince? Okay. The motion to approve the financial report dated January 2018, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Absentions? Thank you, Vince. Okay, item nine, reported board chair, update on committee meeting dates. Christine, policy?
Policy is meeting on, I believe, the 26th. Yep.
Ellen, communications?
Our meeting is Monday, March 12. I also attended the parent leadership forum this afternoon. It's the, the parent leaders that come together for Kathy. It was not as well-attended, which was a little shocking today, but it's okay. It was actually a very good discussion. And Kathy was talking about the letter she sent out to families, that document, we all received it, and probably brainstorming ways to get that document out to PTOs, especially online, because there's many links. And that was a terrific timeline. That is a, really a powerful piece of communication for us, for parent leaders, our community. So, and we just discussed with those that were there, the, the state of our facilities and the history, and how we, we got here through underfunding. So we are really trying to get the word out to the parent community as to the reasons why our, our buildings are in the shape they're in, in the urgency. So, went well.
All right, thanks. Just, you say, not well-attended. What, how many were there? What, I mean, just chairman?
Only two.
Two, okay. No, just curious. I don't know what that means. I mean, I just don't...
It's unusual. It's very unusual. And, you know, we talked about, it might be that no elementary parents, it might be that 4 o'clock hours. We'll, we'll...
Yeah, no, I'm just curious to see, okay, thank you.
We usually have representation from all the schools, so...
Surprised, I'm surprised in light of a lot of the recent events, so...
Right.
Yeah. Yeah, contextually, I guess, so, yeah. Okay, negotiations, Marx, absent, and curriculum, Michelle's absent.
Curriculum's going to be the 20th.
The 20th, yeah. Okay. Okay. Then go into executive session, this point. Okay. Okay, they're back in session. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.